All right, great. All right, thank you for your patience. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, October 16th, 2018. And again, if you would please rise, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. First order of business is, actually, I'm gonna, we forgot one item. This is a regular meeting, we forgot to put public comment on.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, you know, it can be fixed. Is there any, does anybody have anything they want to say that's like not already on the agenda? Because if there is, I'll just add it, well, we'll vote to add it to the agenda. If not, we'll just keep going. All right, good. Then, next order of business is, we have several meeting minutes to approve. First one will be the minutes of the meeting of Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
We'll make that motion to approve on October 2nd.
Okay, any changes, corrections? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Next is the joint meeting of October 3rd, 2018.
Make motion to approve, minutes of October 3rd.
2nd.
Any corrections? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And finally, the special meeting of Tuesday, October 9th, 2018.
I'll make motion to approve minutes of the special meeting of October 9th.
You'll have to second that.
2nd.
All right, any changes, corrections, comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain on that one. All right, thank you. Moving on to new business. One thing that we, along with some of the other stuff we did earlier tonight, one thing that's been pending for a very long time is the appointment of Bethel's very first ever poet laureate. And this is an effort that we launched many months ago in conjunction with Bethel Arts. And I'd like to read the recommendation that came from Bethel Arts and introduce our first poet laureate. It says, Dear Board of Selectmen, as of our final meeting on August 13th, 2018, the Committee of Bethel Arts has chosen Ms. Courtney Davis as our selection for Bethel's first poet laureate. Courtney is an outstanding candidate who brings much-needed experience and energy to this exciting position. With that, we recommend that the Board of Selectmen vote in favor of her confirmation. So just to let you know, Courtney, you are here and welcome. This is, this is an honorary position, like almost everything else we do in town. There's no compensation, except the satisfaction of, you know, what you're going to do. I've discussed your qualifications and the work that you've done with Bethel Arts and we're very excited to have you assume this position and looking forward to developing a program that supports, to help support literary arts in the town of Bethel. So if I could, I'd like to present you with this. So, brand-new position.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you, well, I'll put a motion on the floor that we appoint Ms. Courtney Davis as Bethel's first poet laureate.
2nd.
All right, any comments? The favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Did you have any comments that you wanted to make?
No, I just wanted to say thank you and I'm honored and I have a lot of, hopefully, good ideas and good plans and I look forward to working with all of the people who are already in place. You know, we have three bookstores and a library and we have you and the Board of Selectmen, so hopefully we can do a lot of good things and interesting things.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to it.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Now, just so you know, we're going to have a formal, like installation, you know, not the appointment part, but there's going to be a celebration for not only you, but also all the other entry, all the other contestants who submitted work. And this will be at Bird's Books at some point in the near future, yet to be determined. So we're looking forward to that.
Thank you, me too. Thank you very much.
So thank you very much for volunteering and we look forward to working with you.
I think we will take our quiet leave. Thank you very much.
That's quite all right.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. You can have the, to keep that from being spread.
The warning on there and all.
Keep it away from anybody.
That's right, okay. Thank you very much. If it's okay with everybody, I want to move the consideration of the fire truck ahead of the watershed plan. Any objections?
No objections.
Okay, so what we have here is, I'm going to turn the floor over to the fire department for a brief presentation. The reason that this is put in as a bid waiver is that the, through the officers of Bethel Volunteer Fire Department, they found a buying group, which is a council of government. It doesn't happen to be in the state of Connecticut, but it's from the Houston-Galveston area, I believe. But it is recognized by the state of Connecticut, the same way GSA and our councils of governments are, and provides contract pricing that provides an attractive price. So I was, when we're done, if you have any comments to add, I'm going to make a motion that we forward to the attorney, the town attorney, for review and approval. If that passes muster, then we'll proceed with the sale. So, did you guys have anything you wanted to add?
Well, it's just to keep everyone in the loop with our process here.
Okay, let me ask you, you're not going to read that, are you?
No, no. This is information for you guys.
Okay.
There is a letter in there explaining, you know, our formal request to waive the bid process, the process that we went through for selection of which manufacturer to recommend. Just briefly, our committee was formed in March. We first started by looking at the current apparatus that the Bethel Fire Department uses, what works, what could we improve on so we can write specs for the most appropriate vehicle. We then started meeting with prospective vendors. We met with four manufacturers. Initially, our thought was to, in an effort to standardize the fleet, we could buy another of what we previously bought. Because of some, because of some ongoing issues with the local warranty service center and some difficulty actually even scheduling a meeting with the Suffolk Corporation, we had to remove them from consideration. We decided if standardizing is not an option, we want to make sure we're purchasing whatever is best for Bethel for now and the future. So we narrowed it down to the Seagrave Corporation. They're the longest-running fire truck manufacturer in the United States. They make, the construction of their fire apparatus is probably the safest, far exceeds the minimum NFPA requirements. There's some information in the folder that I gave you guys that has, that explains all that. And there's a website where you can look at videos and crash testing and things like that. They build a lot of safety into their design, so it's ergonomically correct. It's built to keep the firefighters safe while they're climbing in and out of it and, God forbid, they're in an accident. The hose beds are designed to be down low, so we're not climbing up on steps to stretch hose off the vehicle, things like that. The local, excuse me, the local sales rep is based out of Brewster, New York. They have the contractual territory, which includes Fairfield County. They're called Hudson Valley Fire Equipment. They've provided us with a preliminary spec. I provided a copy of the blueprint in the folders there. That's a rough draft. Basically, from this point forward, to get a finalized copy of the specs with a HGAC price, they just need confirmation that the town is on the HGAC purchasing program. They, they will not release that price without us being on the program. All four manufacturers that we met with participate with HGAC, so this is something, this is something that we would propose, no matter who we were going to recommend buying.
Okay.
My senior engineer, Ryan, is actually the one that identified HGAC as a process that would streamline our purchasing process and save some funding.
How much money are we looking at Tuesday estimate? I'm not holding you to exact.
That's the, that's the thing with, with HGAC purchases, is they, they won't release the final number. They've given us a preliminary estimate of $658,000. The remaining $2,000, part of the HGAC process is there's a, there's a fee each time you purchase from that cooperative, and that's a $2,000 fee. So that puts us right in line with our $660,000 allotment. Had the vehicle gone out to bid, similar vehicles current day are going for anywhere from $700,000 to, you know, $700,000 and higher.
Somewhere within budget.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, we won't, we won't go over.
Ryan, if you want to add anything about HGAC, this was Ryan's recommendation. He brought this to the fire department and saw this as a benefit for the town.
Unless you guys have any specific questions, it's pretty, pretty standard.
I'll just ask one question, okay?
Sure.
Because I remember the last vehicle we delivered to the fire department there, our big thing was clearance.
Right.
Because we have always an issue by clearance.
Right, yeah. And... The finished, the finished height of this vehicle unlaid and so with no equipment in it, weighing it down.
With the weights on the top.
With tire chains installed on the tires, it's nine foot six.
Okay, how's that, what's your clearance?
That gets us under our 10-foot door header. So we'll have four inches of, of safety there.
Because I remember the last truck was, was a really an issue.
Right. And that was one of the things that we, that we looked at. We said the size of the, of the bay that we park it in, the height, and for that matter, a lot of the territory that we cover, specific to like the Codfish Hill neighborhood, the lower part of Route 58, we have long driveways to negotiate. So even besides the firehouse, just the, the first district that we respond in was a big part of the design that went into this. The wheelbase on this one is slightly shorter than the vehicle that it's replacing, so this one will actually be more maneuverable than our previous one.
Actually, it turned out to not be an issue of the thought. It was going to be an issue.
Right.
So yeah, unless you guys have any specific question about HGAC, I mean, it's basically just the same thing as you said with the state bid, but it's federal and...
What's your anticipated delivery?
It's 240 days is their maximum. And from the Hudson Valley Fire Equipment, they said their, their delivery right now is around seven months for a popper truck.
You guys have any other question?
This, you, you mentioned the $2,000. Is that an annual fee or next time you buy a truck from them, it's another $2,000 to walk to the harvest?
Yeah, right. So joining HAC is free, free to join. I'm not, I can't speak on other things. I know HAC, you can buy anything from fire trucks, like toilet paper. It's a huge...
Yeah, it's a goddamn cost.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I do know that fire apparatus is the custom aspect of it. So whether you're spending, you know, two grand on a fire truck or $700,000, it's always that two grand fee. If you buy four fire trucks at the same time, it's still just that $2,000 fee.
Will that be an annual charge?
It's per purchase charge. By joining HAC now, it actually, it opens the door for the town to purchase other items. You can purchase computer equipment, you know, paper, toilet paper, lawn mowers, you know, there's a whole variety. So there's a fee for each purchase as opposed to having an annual fee. Once you join, you, you're a member of it. You're just paying a fee each time you use it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I think considering that this is, we first have to approve the buying group, I'm going to do this in two steps. So at this meeting, I'm going to put a motion on the floor now that we authorize the first selectman or designate to join the buying cooperative, subject to approval of the town attorney. Once he gives me the clearance, then I'll sign this and you guys can get the actual price. And then we'll do a formal bid waiver, which also has to, has to be voted on too. But that, not, not really a problem to do it that way. So I'll put, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Only thing to save money.
Absolutely.
And time.
I've got that reputation.
Marty, did you give?
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.
It's, it's good for the town. Have you looked up the sweeper?
Yeah.
Have you looked up the sweeper?
Yeah.
Would save $60,000 if we were on this program.
Really? We don't say that a lot.
Sweeper two, keep, keep it fine. What you guys doing?
That's a big savings.
All right, all right, thanks, guys.
Take care.
All right, well, I'm sorry, Courtney, you just lost your audience. Except for us. All right, thank you, Chief.
Chief, take care.
All right, this has been an unusual night, but Richard Paul and Marty in the end, I'd like to introduce Courtney Morehouse from the Houston Valley Association. And you have a presentation for us on the condition of our waterways, I believe, right?
Yes, that is correct. So I work for the Houston Valley Association. Thank you for having me here. We've been since 2014, working on a watershed plan for the Still River. So that's the major tributary to the Houstonic that runs through Danbury, up through Brookfield, and then F.D.'s out into the Houstonic in New Milford. Bethel itself has nothing of the main stem in its town, but you have two main tributaries that are pretty major tributaries to the Still River. And we've been working specifically with Beth Kavanaugh and also with Eileen Earl on, on specific projects that have to do with parks and rec. So we've had them on our partners, Still River Partners Group, that has been working on the watershed planning process. So I thank them for being a part of the process this entire time. So we're kind of at the second step of the watershed planning process. The first step is to gather all of the relevant stakeholders, so that's municipalities throughout the Still, including Bethel, but also key stakeholders such as land trusts, nonprofits, recreational groups that are interested in developing greater recreation throughout the Still and the area. And that happened in 2014. We've been having regular quarterly meetings in order to get to the second step, which is to essentially give a snapshot of the health of the watershed as it is today. And so we've gathered over 250 documents. We've walked around 30 stream miles throughout, depending on where we thought we might find the biggest impacts. And we've come up with a report that's that snapshot called the Existing Conditions Report. And that can be found online, the full report. It can be found online at stillriverwatershed.org. And it's open for public comment. So that's partly why I'm here, in front of Board of Selectmen's and also city councils to advertise to the public that you yourself can go on and look at the full report. And if you don't have time to read the 62 pages or whatever it ends up being...
I read it.
You did?
I did.
That's excellent. There is also a summary on the website as well that kind of gives you the key highlights. And that's actually, you might have gotten this in your packet, and if you didn't, then... That is also on the website that you can download. And that gives you the current water quality status as it is, based on town information and information from CT Deep, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. So the two, there were, yeah, the two major tributaries in Bethel are this Lime Kiln Brook, which actually runs from Bethel into Danbury and then meets up with the Houstonic, oh, sorry, with the Still River here in Danbury. And then the other, this one is East Swamp, which is also a trib of Lime Kiln Brook. And then there's another major trib called Simpog Brook. And the pink indicates where the waterways are impaired. So the whole impetus for a watershed planning process is when the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection says that the waterway is impaired for a specific pollution and that they call it a 303D listed impairment. So it's impaired for recreation in Bethel and then so, much of the Still River is impaired for aquatic life as well, much of the main stem. So the Still River, the history of the Still River is, as many people know, it was pretty much considered dead. It had centuries of pollution being dumped into it. And it really wasn't until the Clean Water Act really started identifying point source pollution. And today, we, we see very little point source pollution. So that's a, that's a big win for the Still. And it's actually one of the main reasons why it's sort of improved to the level it is. And then the other big milestone for the Still was the building of the sewage treatment plant in 1993 in Danbury, which, you know, really catapulted from what was considered dead in the 80s to all of a sudden having fish and wildlife and, and birds who eat wildlife come back into the region in a way that it really hadn't before. So it's sort of made a remarkable comeback as a watershed. And the, the biggest issue today is actually the non-point source pollution. So non-point source pollution is pollution that you can't trace back to a single point. And the biggest way to think about that is runoff, stormwater runoff from our roads. So stormwater runoff, carrying salts, oils, pesticides from lawns, grass clippings, et cetera, making their way into the waterways. And the biggest impact that it has, in the Still at least, is that it increases E. coli levels. So E. coli is the, what we call the total maximum daily load or regulatory amount being set by CT Deep. That says you have a certain amount of reduction of E. coli throughout the Still. And E. coli in itself is not harmful, but it is an indicator bacteria telling you the water quality of a specific stream or water body. And the way that CT Deep has set that throughout the Still is to have percent reductions in specific locations. And then they monitor those locations and say, you've made, you know, 70% reduction at this location and that therefore you're within the TMDL, the total maximum daily load. So it's like a pollution diet that CT Deep sets. So in Bethel specifically, there's pretty much three relevant TMDL sites. One at the entry, right before you get to the sewage treatment plant, before it, they have a TMDL free coli that sets it at a 47, that calls for a 47% reduction in E. coli. And then East Swamp, right before the, at the confluence of Lime Kiln and East Swamp, you have a, calls for a 66% reduction. And then Simpog Brook, downstream of Bethel, calls for an 88% reduction. So that, that one's a little bit, I want to, I don't want to say Bethel is responsible for that one per se, because I'm not quite sure. I think that partly what's happening, there is some impact here that, that I'm, I don't have off the top of my head, that's causing a higher level of E. coli at this, in Simpog Brook.
Where, where is that?
Simpog Brook is...
Is that down near Route 53 and the railroad tracks?
Yeah, exactly. And Grassy Plain Street. It basically sort of mirrors Grassy Plain Street.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah. And it's not impaired, it's not labeled as impaired through Bethel.
Oh, okay.
So there must be some sort of impact in Danbury, or it leads me to believe there's some sort of impact in Danbury that's creating an impairment.
Is that flowing north or south at that point?
It's flowing north.
Yeah.
Yeah. The Still runs north, which is a little confusing to most Connecticut rivers.
Yeah, it's one of the few rivers that do.
That runs north, yeah, yeah. So it sort of runs, you know, east and...
Is it, is it possible it's still picking up groundwater pollution from Bethel's closed landfill?
Oh, I, I don't know. It might be. And that's sort of part of, yeah, that's good to know.
Well, that, we had old hat factories in town too, so it could be groundwater.
It could be that as well. And when we've walked...
But is it E. coli that you're testing primarily?
No, actually, we don't, we don't test for the E. coli, but CT Deep does.
Yeah.
And what we've done in the past two years is we've walked and, and did a rapid assessment with, just with our, not chemical, but just with our eyes, so going, that's an impacted buffer, i.e. it doesn't have enough vegetative buffer, it's probably not filtering runoff in the way that it should. And so we record with, with our GIS, the places where we kind of see restoration opportunities or impacts along the stream. And we did notice a few in Bethel along Simpog Brook. So it could be contributing and also could not be.
Yeah.
It's unclear unless you have like an idea of exactly where.
Right.
But we do have maps of all of the streams that we walked in Bethel and they're part of the ECR report. So the full report includes those as appendixes.
Because that, that part of Bethel doesn't have that much...
No.
It's...
It's not as significant as like portions of Lime Kiln or, or East Swamp, for example. Yeah. But there are some sort of shopping centers, et cetera.
Thirty years ago is when we dumped the sewage plant dumped into the, that Brook.
Into Simpog.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, so maybe, yeah.
But that, that was been out of service for 20, 25 years now.
E. coli, deteriate, I'd be more concerned with mercury and all that.
Right, right. The mercury was, is more long-lasting and, for sure. And yeah, I don't know what the, you know, time span it takes for E. coli to work out of the system.
Half the E. coli, I'm just reaching right now.
Yeah.
I was, I think five years, okay?
Okay.
Down to 10% or something like that.
Right, 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 yeah. So the E. coli that you're seeing now is more, you know, if, if dog waste isn't getting picked up regularly, that contributes to E. coli. If there's sewage leakages happening in perhaps somebody's, you know, pump slump or whatever, that's, that's going to contribute to the E. coli.
Yeah.
So that sort of thing. This doesn't apply to Bethel per se, but another, another TMDL is in this, what we call Lower Lime Kiln Brook, downstream of the sewage treatment plant. It has additional TMDLs besides E. coli for copper, zinc, ammonia, chlorine. And that's really just to track the impacts of that, of the sewage treatment plant on the, on the waterways.
We were just talking about tracking stuff.
Right, right. And so the, the other sort of impact that we see quite a bit in the Still is impervious cover. So hard surfaces, roofs, pavement, asphalt driveways, et cetera, anything where water isn't allowed to permeate through into the substrata and get cleaned by microbes before hitting a waterway, that can increase not only the water quality, you know, impacts, make a more, make a, make worse water quality, if you will.
What about the endpoint of the Still, okay?
The endpoint here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the assessment of the quality of the water at that point?
That is, let me see, there is that. So the endpoint has that, has a point that they track as well that calls for 52% reduction in E. coli. So it sort of does, I mean, you obviously will always get cumulative effects as you move downstream.
Settling.
Yeah. And one of the projects that we're doing next year that we've gotten a grant from CT Deep to do is do water quality testing in some of these key locations as well. So we have a more updated and better sense of not only coli, but ammonia, phosphorus, et cetera, some of the things that we might also see.
And it'll just make sense.
Right.
How about salts, like from road salts and stuff like that? Does your report have anything?
It does. It's included in there, it's, it's included there in a general way, i.e. this is what we know about salts generally. And that's partly because the USGS Brookfield Station has actually been tracking chlorides for a number of years. And they're currently in the process of putting together a report specifically saying, in the Still, this is the impact of salts. And they've seen, we saw sort of a sneak peek preliminary and they've seen huge spikes in the winter.
That's what I was curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Because at the endpoint, I think, you know, I just know chemistry, but salinity, you know, that's easy to track.
To track with the chlorides, yeah. And so since USGS is sort of already doing that, we're going to, we're going to pull their data and integrate it into the final watershed plan. But for now, they've kind of, we've kind of, we don't have that data yet. Yeah, but it is something that we should track.
It's simple, too.
Especially more because de-icing has become more of a preliminary or preemptive.
And vocal.
And vocal, yeah. And so, I mean, the unfortunate thing is, well, fortunate for the town, but it's, accidents have gone down significantly because of de-icing.
There's something else that perhaps your organization should consider.
Yeah.
And it's what, I know many of the automobile dealers, especially those who repair trucks, there's magnesium chloride that is also being deposited on roads.
Yeah.
And that is very corrosive.
Very corrosive, yeah.
And, you know, that, that's also another good indicator.
Yeah. The pretreatment.
Of how pure your water is.
Yeah.
If we're putting too much down or, you know...
Exactly. And they, so one of the things that we, when we sort of saw the preliminary findings from the USGS Brookfield Station is that they're finding that ever since pretreatment has been done, I mean, again, accidents have gone down due to pretreatment, but the magnesium chloride and other sort of like heavier metal chlorides have spiked the chloride levels in waterways pretty significantly. So you're sort of seeing an increase. So you're sort of seeing an increase.
There is an adverse effect on plant life. And I, I have read recently too, that well contamination near major roadways is becoming a problem.
Yeah, yeah. So it's sort of something we have to sort of think about, and we don't have the data for it yet, but, yeah.
It suggests that we should just stay home when it snows.
It's not bad, we do have the internet.
Yeah.
Or as one old selectman said, or first selectman said, God put it there, he can take it back.
I like that, I like that.
That's great.
So what, what can a municipality do from a policy perspective to mitigate non-point pollution?
So there's, there's a number of things we, that you all can do, and also, you know, as a municipality encouraging residents to do. One of the major things we can do is make sure that there's a vegetative buffer around every single body of water that we have throughout the town. So if you have a stream in your backyard or on public property, making sure that there's at least a twenty-five foot vegetative buffer of shrubs or some sort of plant makes a huge, huge impact on letting that water slow down, decrease the flooding as well, and also just catching whatever might go and not letting it permeate into the soil before it hits. And then the other thing is, one of the things that we did when we walked all of the stream beds is identify potential restoration projects. So not only for riparian buffers, but also just for green infrastructure opportunities. So one of the things, the stage we're at with the ECR is to have you all review it, and then also tell us what priorities you might see. So if you know of a spot or of a stream that you can, you know, has poor water quality or floods frequently, for example, bring that to our attention and letting us know so that we can write that into the watershed plan and use that to fundraise and raise money around addressing that specific issue.
Does the Army Corps of Engineers help, help your organization at all relative to stream, controlling streams?
No, they haven't. We usually, we usually raise money and use volunteers, sort of independently of them, yeah. They work on bigger projects, yeah.
But they're always concerned about as soon as you touch a stream, what's the impact downstream towards the bigger rivers.
Right, right, yeah. But no, we haven't, we haven't worked on that. One of the programs that has come out of this that we sort of like preemptively put in place for our implementation is the Connections Program. So Connections is our youth program that can, that connects youth, high school aged youth, with different restoration projects. And actually in Bethel, we had a pretty, a fairly significant program where we took, brought Newtown High School and Danbury High School kids. And we'll also be working with another group of kids in the fall. We planted a riparian buffer, which I think you gave plaques to our summer interns for, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, which was great. And it was, you know, that's to produce the...
The Bennett.
Exactly, at the Bennett Park. And then we're doing another buffer along that stream edge at the lower and the downhill side of the dog park. Because we sort of find that forty percent of people don't pick up their dog waste. That dog waste at the current, it's about a five, five to ten foot, you know, stretch of land between the dog fence and the actual stream. So getting as much buffer in there as possible and BMPs to reduce that dog waste going directly into the stream is sort of like...
I want to put up some trail cams and catch those people.
It's sort of a, it's kind of a funny thing, you know? Cause there are bags at that dog park that you have, which is, is great.
You know what I find? I, I go mountain biking in Huntington Park, and I find people are conscientious enough to bring a little bag.
Yeah.
And then they leave it on the trail for somebody else to pick up.
Yeah. Which I always find that very funny, it's like, why'd you bring that?
Personally, I'm not amused.
Yeah, yeah. So that's sort of the, that's sort of the projects that we've had. And then we've identified a couple of other projects throughout the town, around specific parks, et cetera, that could also have a buffer built in. And those are sort of, those projects are great because they sort of utilize local youth, introduce them to career paths in, in the environmental careers, and get an idea that, of what they want to do. So that's sort of, that's what we have going on. So I guess for the public and also for you, check out the website, Still a Watershed. And if you know of restoration opportunities in particular, you know, let us know directly.
Okay.
And we can write it into the watershed plan.
Another policy, I'm sorry, real quick, another policy question.
Yeah.
Does the state, I was surprised to learn when I travel a little bit that some states allow stormwater fees.
Yes.
And I know that New York and other states are quite a bit ahead of us and we're, and at least, I don't know if it's the state level or the municipal level, or maybe it's even the county level, but requiring porous parking lot surfaces.
Yeah, exactly.
Instead of having a, an impervious surface, you've got, they look like paving bricks that have places for water to percolate through.
Yeah, exactly.
Is the state of Connecticut requiring that, allowing it? And can we, are municipalities allowed to charge stormwater fees to pay for some of those improvements?
Yeah, I'm not sure. That'd be something I'd have to look into. I haven't heard of that throughout the state of Connecticut. I do know that, you know, one of the things that the watershed plan is going to look to recommend is, for example, when a city does have to repave a parking lot, and you have to do a full re-haul, looking into some of these green infrastructure, like green infrastructure BMPs out there is sort of like, it kind of, you know, feeds two birds with one scone, if you will. It'll like also help with the water quality, and since you're doing it anyway, you know. So I don't know, but I can look into it and see, yeah.
Okay.
So how does someone get involved with your organization?
So we do have, right now we have...
I think you just volunteered.
Yeah, I think you just volunteered.
No, not me, my grandson said.
Yeah, yeah, oh, if you, if it's a kid.
No, well, he's a young adult.
Okay. We do have volunteers. We haven't had too many volunteer days in the still, mostly because we've done a lot of work in the background just collecting information and figuring out where the actual restoration projects are. But then once that happens, you know, emailing me, CourtneyMorehouse.HBA@gmail.com, and letting me know you're interested in volunteering in the still, and I put you on the volunteer list.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I think he would be interested, he, he likes seeing environmentally, you know, go out with the turtles.
Oh, that's great. That's excellent. So the next steps are that we come back to, we're going to continue this process. We have a vision and goals planning meeting in November. And then we have about one more year before we have a complete watershed plan, in which I'll be in front of you again, sort of with recommendations as to what each town does. And then eventually, all the, with all the towns' input and, you know, edits and amendments to the watershed plan, we look to have all the municipalities adopt it, and we, and then HVA fundraises money for implementation. So we look to raise money for these specific projects in order to clean up the water or improve the water quality throughout the still.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thank you so much for this.
Yeah.
I was just mentioning to you, Courtney, East Swamp Brook starts in my backyard.
Oh, does it? Are you, is it, you must be down here then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Very swampy then.
It starts in the cruchina and comes down the back of me.
Excellent, well, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your patience tonight, I appreciate that.
Oh, no, of course.
Well, we wanted to give you the full time.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, I, I did say, I've been very busy, I know you've been trying to get on our agenda for a couple of months now, but when, when I read the report and I saw the E. coli level readings, and I said, you know, this is, this is something that, you know, I, I foresee this as going from restoration to prevention and transitioning at some point.
That'd be great, yeah.
And, and I have been looking at what other states do in terms of stormwater requirements. I know, I know that the state is looking at building some stuff into our MS four process.
Yep.
So it's something we're gonna have to plan for.
Exactly.
Probably planning and zoning is gonna have to take a look at it in terms of future development too.
And the MS four is really kind of where it shows up the most.
Yeah.
You know? Yeah, cause they're really trying to find a regulatory way to treat non-point source pollution like they have with point solution, or point source pollution, you know, so.
Well, I'll get in trouble for that. My, my solution would be ban all the chemical fertilizers. We, we don't need golf course lawns. We really don't.
Yeah.
Suck down our tires a little.
Well, thank you so much, have a good one, good evening.
Thank you, Courtney. Have a good evening. All right, last item is under Old Business, and this is consideration of our health department fees. I have a document you, that I put together. There, there's actually three separate things here, and I put this together for your consideration just to facilitate our discussion. But you'll notice that the top of the first page, it says two-year phase-in. What this assumes is that we took Laura's, Laura Vassil's recommended levels, and I just split it in half and had the first half phase-in on, first, first half effective January first, 2019, so about two and a half months down the road, the second half phases in January first, 2020. The second one, which is the one that I'm personally recommending for your consideration, is a two-year phase-in for restaurants only. Because the, the restaurant owners were the, the group that were most impacted by the, the change in fees, and they are the ones that are most, I, I would say, living close to the edge in terms of their business. So what this does is this, this puts most of the fees in place effective January one, so again, we still have a two and a half month window to notify the community. But the, the restaurant changes, all the restaurant changes would phase in over two years. So they, the, the second half would be effective January one, 2020. Now, you'll notice that some of the fees are in bold. Like if you look at number two hundred on the left-hand side, this is on the, the two-year phase-in restaurants only sheet. Item two hundred under wells, well permits, Laura recommended one twenty-five. What I put in here is one hundred, and this is, this is based on some input that Richie sent into the office. On this one right here where it says two-year phase-in restaurants only.
Okay.
So you'll, so there are one, two, three, four, five, six items that were reduced a little bit. And these mostly are to, to benefit homeowners as opposed to commercial businesses. So those, these, they, they still go up pretty substantially, but they, they were softened a little bit.
And it was for homeowners repairs, not the initial, like if you're building a new house and all that. So it was, you know, I, I felt, you know, that for homeowner, they have to repair the system that costs multiple thousands of dollars, that, you know, we could give them a little break on the, on that.
So, so these are the, these are the three scenarios. And I, I, I just, you know, Richie sent that in, and I, I just put this together on my own, but this is for your consideration. The, the third sheet says no delay, that just simply makes everything effective on January first exactly as Laura submitted. That's, that's the original sheet. So personally, I think the, the two-year phase-in for restaurants is, I think is, is the most sensitive to the community's needs. Well, properly funding the department. And I think it's important to point out for the record that these are, you know, these are not taxes, these are user fees for services that are essentially, in, in most cases, business, business expenses. So it's appropriate that those fees are able to offset the cost of providing them. So I will give you guys a couple of minutes to look over these, and we can discuss further.
Show me your book. I was looking at two-year phase-in, and this is restaurants only.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at one thirty-eight, one thirty-seven, same.
Yeah.
Same, same.
Yeah, here we are. I'll pull it apart, here we are, let me show you what this... On the first sheet that says two-year phase-in, I did, this is what Laura recommended, that's the proposed total.
Right.
So I took what, I took the increase, it goes from fifty to one twenty-five. So step one would be January one, 2019 to eighty-eight, and step two, twenty, one twenty-five, which is, which that, that matches. Now, the only difference with this one is we make, we make these changes in, in the first year, and then with the restaurants, there's a second phase in year two. That's what that means.
But it's the same.
Yes, right. You, you end up in the same place, it's just a question of how long it takes to get there.
I like the two-year phase-in. Where I can do track, and then you did all these.
Yeah.
I mean, definitely, we, I, I shouldn't do the, the no delay.
The no delay?
Yeah. Even though, you know, they've gotten a break over the, the twenty years that there was no raises, but this gives them an opportunity to plan for the future too.
Yeah, it's worth, it's worth noting, I was discussing this with the department, it's worth noting that the restaurant fees, they're, they're a one-time fee, they're paid once per year. And they're paid at the beginning of the fiscal year. So all of our towns' restaurants that are currently in operation are paid up until Ju-, yeah, till July first, 2019 anyway. So even with this phase-in, they, they wouldn't see the next bill till next summer. So they've got plenty of time to plan for it.
And at that, it's a reduced rate too?
Yes, that's right.
We love the constructional, right?
Yes, that's correct.
What about the nonprofits? What did we do with the nonprofit?
Are they, are they on here?
I don't, I don't see them, so that's, that's already...
There's something at the top of the page too. Nonprofit temporary service application.
Yeah, there it is.
Excludes religious organizations.
So she was currently charging them forty dollars?
Yes. Well, except for churches. There's, there's an exclusion there under two-two-four-point-four.
For fees?
What's?
I thought it was twenty-five. Twenty-five is what she has been charging, she wanted it to go up. She hasn't charged non-for-profit in the past.
That's what I thought it was.
Any non-for-profit she has not charged.
Okay, so that would, would, what would that be, two-two-four-point-four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so...
Right, and she also originally recommended that it be fifty dollars for two-two-four-point-four, not forty. I don't know where that came from.
But prior, prior to it was zero?
That's correct, according to the sheet that we used for the public hearing notice.
Okay. All right, so that wasn't forty to begin with, that was zero.
Zero, right.
Okay. Well...
I, I'd like to make a, a statement and a motion. That would reduce the nonprofit maybe down to twenty-five dollars. I, I, you know, a lot of the nonprofits tries to raise money, and I'll use the Boy Scouts, you know, they'll do a pancake breakfast and, or spaghetti dinner to raise money for their troop projects and things, and also, you know, it goes back to the community.
Sure.
So it's that much more money that they have to raise for something like that, so...
Okay.
You know, generally a non, nonprofit is, is raising money for a good cause.
Right. Okay, so what?
I would like to reduce it to twenty-five.
Across the board?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so why don't I make a motion that no matter what, what plan we pick, we're gonna take two-two-four-point-four and establish a nonprofit rate of twenty-five dollars. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
You know, there is something here though, she's got under two-two-point-four. She had nothing in the first box, and fifty is new, and then fifty is then, you know, proposed, and then fifty. But then below that, she's got forty dollars with a question mark. Nothing under new, and then another forty dollars with a question mark. I don't know what the hell she was doing there.
She was doing research, which was turned in, and she found that in our area, I think they surveyed sixteen, eighteen towns, something like that, in Fairfield County and in New Haven County. And she found that the fees for nonprofits range from zero to sixty dollars. And she found that the fees for nonprofits range from zero to sixty dollars, so that's why she put a question mark in there, but I, I agree with Rich, I think, um. But of course, we just voted on it, but I think twenty-five is a reasonable fee.
Yeah.
And then, um, and this, so this still excludes religious organizations like the churches that, that provides, yeah, okay. Okay, so, all right, we've established that one item, now for the rest of them, uh, what's your, what's your pleasure on, on the overall fee schedule?
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the two-year phase-in restaurant only, um, proposal.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the restaurant only?
Yeah, and I'll give you a copy of this, which you can, you can copy into the minutes.
Oh, I, okay.
You, okay, so it's the one label, two-year phase-in for restaurants only, and then, and then the implication, of course, is, or, or the reality is, all the rest would become effective on, uh. January one, twenty nineteen, and you seconded that, right?
Right.
Okay, and that is as amended with two-two-four-point-four being shown as a twenty-five dollar fee, okay, any, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, those in favor, say a aye, or say a no, yes?
Have you run this by Laura?
Yes, yep.
Well, other than both, not.
Well, twenty-five bucks.
No, she, Laura, Laura is happy with any movement that we can make after twenty-one years, so not, not looking at these, so she's, yeah, she's fine. Okay, those in favor, say a aye or say a no, aye, I'm curious, and, uh, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm curious, thank you very much.